To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the meeting of February eleventh, two thousand thirteen. With that, roll call.
Leary?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Semansky?
Here.
Caprowski?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Weyland?
Here.
In your packet you have minutes of three meetings, January fourteenth, January twenty-eighth, and January thirtieth. Due to the fact that not everybody was here, we'll do each one of them separately. Any discussion on January fourteenth minutes? Any additions or corrections? Not a motions in order to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion, roll call.
Leary?
Upstate.
Aaron?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Weyland?
Yes.
Okay, January twenty-eighth workshop. Any discussion, comments, corrections on those minutes?
One comment that I've already given the clerk on the page three, fourth line down, after administrator said it should be included, the engineering firms only have class one operators and, and then it would be between set and off that it's added.
And you told the clerk of those corrections? Any other additions or corrections? Not, motions in order to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion, roll call.
Weyland?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Okay, January thirtieth, intergovernmental meeting. Any additions, corrections, if kind of general? If none, motion orders approved?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. That, roll call.
Leary?
Upstate.
Aaron?
Yes.
Semansky?
Upstate.
Caprowski?
Upstate.
Coleman?
Yes.
Weyland?
Yes.
Okay, with that, village clerk's report.
Does the village president have a vote?
You got enough? I don't know how many was there.
I have three yes votes, three yes, three no, so yeah, you have to vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Total tax income received since the last board meeting, one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. And attached to the clerk's report is a resolution, or proclamation, I'm sorry, recognizing the month of February as Boy Scouts of America Month, and a copy of the proclamation with the request attached for your information. Are there any problems with proclamation? That's all I have.
Okay, any questions at clerk? Okay, we will now move to our audience, and this evening, we have, like, we had some miscommunications, but I think you're Rita, right?
Correct.
Rita from Will County, on this is a child's voice in court to be heard. You have a presentation, and I, we're welcome to listen to it, so.
Thank you. I started this last year, and apparently there was a miscommunication, and we were supposed to be at the township meeting, I apologize. But for those who may not be familiar, CASA is Court Appointed Special Advocates. Are any of you familiar with our program?
No.
What we do is, we train community volunteers to advocate for the best interest of children who have been abused or neglected. Illinois State Statute requires that when a child has been harmed or abused or neglected, they're required by statute to have a guardian ad litem represent their best interest to the juvenile judge. In Will County, that guardian ad litem could be a CASA volunteer, which provides one-on-one advocacy for these children. Or if there isn't enough CASA volunteers available, the juvenile court assigns public defenders. So the difference between a CASA volunteer, when we, our volunteers will go through thirty-three hours of training, and what they do is, they represent that child. They work with them in the home, the school, hospital, and therapist, and our volunteers provide court recommendations to the juvenile judges to what's in the best interest. When a public defender is assigned to those cases, due to the magnitude of the amount that they carry, the, the public defenders are only required to see these children once or twice a year, so you can imagine that a lot, you know, many of these children will fall through the cracks in our society, and, and our goal is to provide them a safer home today so that they're not in our systems tomorrow. I can provide you an example of, of a young lady, which one of our volunteers represents, and she's from the Frankford community, that she drives, but she met this girl when she was sixteen years old, and the girl had been in the system for eight years. It took the young girl two years to trust her because she had so many social service spaces turning over in her life, but after two years, our volunteer had mentored her through a teenage pregnancy, and I am proud to say today, that girl is in her third year at Northern, and she will finish and be a success story for our program. You, as you can imagine, these kids, they have nobody. Our volunteer had explained to me, she was on vacation in North Dakota visiting her grandchild, and the young girl's car broke down, and she had nobody to call to give her guidance or direction on what to do, so she called our volunteer, who had to walk her through the steps, because as you can see, many of these children have nobody there guiding them through their lives. They've been harmed, first of all, by, by somebody they trust and love, and then they end up in a system where they've been neglected. Last year in Will County, we had, our CASA program had a hundred and four volunteers advocate for two hundred and seventy-four children. Our volunteers traveled across Will County, because we represent all children, over fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six miles, uh, they drove over thirty-six thousand miles, and they worked over fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six hours. In the Washington Township community, we served three children last year. Of those children, our volunteers worked four hundred and forty-eight, four hundred and forty-eight, four hundred and eighty-four hours advocating for the best interest so that these children can find placement in a safe, permanent nurturing home. What we do today, again, is that our goal is to get these children in an environment where they're in a safe home and that they don't fall through the cracks and become part of our system in the future. How can you help? It costs our program approximately nine hundred dollars a year to advocate for one child. Again, if these children are represented by a public defender in our community, they're going to, that their, their healthcare benefit is more than nine hundred dollars a year to help that child. So there's a savings to the community, and, and that's why we're out there. We're reaching and asking, I'm, I'm visiting all of the townships and villages, and asking for their support to consider helping our program as we represent these kids, and if each one of us work collectively, we'll make a difference so that we can serve all. Last year, when I spoke that we only served two hundred and seventy-four children, that's only fifty percent of the kids in the Will County community that had a CASA volunteer advocating for the rest for their best interest. The remainder of the children are assigned public defenders, and their, and their level of care is far below the work of a CASA staff. So I ask you to consider supporting our program to, to the amount that you can, so that we can continue to represent the children in all, all the communities in the Will County area. Are there any questions?
Do you do placement of these youngsters, or, or, I mean, are they placed in somebody's home, like a foster?
How the process works is if, if, if there's a hotline call that a child may be abused or neglected, it goes, DCFAS does an investigation. If they deem that there is a, there's a possibility that the child has been harmed, they take the child into care, and then it goes in front of the juvenile judge, and she assigns a CASA volunteer at that point, because our, our cases, our volunteers are guardian ad litem, so we cannot be assigned a case unless the juvenile judge appoints us. But what we're looking at is the child, you know, sometimes the child may be with the parents, and they're following court orders, or, or asked to provide, do parenting classes. Sometimes they're in a foster home. Sometimes the foster home isn't always the safe home. You know, you can never, and that's why the guardian ad litem is so important, because we provide those objectives to, to the judge directing her as to what really is in the best interest. We have no agenda. We're not DCFAS, we're not a state's attorney wanting to prosecute, and public defenders represent the parents. So everybody in the child's life has their own special agenda, whereas the CASA volunteer, volunteer is primarily there just to represent, is, is that child in a safe home. And one of the startling statistics of today is most of the children that we have, seventy percent of them are removed from the home due to neglect. And the neglect that we're facing in the Will County community is drug addiction, heroin, alcoholism. Those are, that's seventy percent of why these children are being removed from the home. And I have to tell you, the state of Illinois has no money, as we all know, so that the standards for removing a child or taking a child into care is far below, I mean, you would not believe how many children are left in an unsafe environment, because it's not cost-effective to the state. So most of these cases don't even come into care. So again, we serve two, two seventy-four, so we, if we were to serve all of the children, and we'd be serving in Will County close to five hundred kids, and I would need approximately two hundred volunteers to advocate for these children. Right now, we're sitting at about ninety volunteers on our, on our caseload.
All right, quick question. Can you intermingle church and state, whether you want to churches, or can you?
I'm, that's, that's my twenty thirteen objective, because last year, in twenty twelve, one of the things I fell below is I had enough funds to serve more kids, but I became short on volunteers. So if, if you're aware of anybody that, that is in the area that would like to reach out and help these kids, we're always in need of volunteers, looking to recruit to serve more children. That was one of our objectives, Jeff.
You, you have other posters or anything that we could put possibly put in the village hall, or something, you know, that, that people are aware of it? I mean, I, I didn't know, I was not aware of a program like this.
No, and that, that's awesome. Maybe it's meant, because last year, Washington Township, they, they provided us a thousand dollar donation to, toward the support of helping the kids.
But it's not just the money, it's also volunteers.
No, we are always in need of volunteers. Again, I, I need to recruit another hundred volunteers to serve all of the children.
How many hours of training?
It's thirty-three hours of training.
Thirty-three.
And then twelve hours of continuing education a year to be a volunteer. And, you know, we're looking for the volunteer that's committed, one that will, we don't want to be another face in, in this, in this child's life. We want to be my volunteer that drives to Northern every month to visit that child and mentor her and support her so she'll finish her college. We don't want a volunteer that, that, you know, starts it and then says, eh, you know, I'm, I'm busy this month, because, you know, that's so many people in their lives say they're busy and drop off. We're looking for those committed, and that's what's unique about our program. We're looking for a committed volunteer that will stay with that child for the duration of the case.
And I'll just make this quick comment. We, in the past, we used to support these different organizations, but it became political, and, and we did away with any grants or anything of that nature. Individually, though, as a board or a community, we can donate to this, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
It would be no problem. You know what I'm saying? As we, we had twenty organizations asking for money and all, and then pretty soon our pockets were empty, so.
No, I can.
And, and that's why we did away with that, because it became political, kind of. We don't, we're nonpartisan, but.
No, and.
It sounds like a good program.
And part of my getting, going out in the community is for recognition, so people are aware that there's a need in your community.
And you are being televised, so your message will get out to a lot of the residents, so, like you said, that, that's great, you know. That's something that's, that has to be dealt with, so.
We appreciate it.
Any comments or questions?
If she had something like that, like you had asked about, you don't have anything saying like, like a flyer, like volunteers needed with like a contact?
Just this one here, huh?
Phone number?
Mm-hmm, that's got our contact information on. Do you need me, I could send it electronically, or I've got more, Billy?
We can, we can even make copies of these if we have to. That's, that's not a problem. We can do that.
Well, she, if she has electronically, you can post it on the village website, yeah.
Yeah.
And it, it does have, at the very back, it's, it has their, their, their web address. CASAofwillcounty.org.
Well, it's, it's, it sounds like a great program, and, and wish you all the success, and hopefully we can get the word out before you and help you, so.
Thank you.
And maybe we can even, who knows, we might get some volunteers, you know?
That would be awesome.
So, I mean, bodies are more important sometimes.
Absolutely. That was our, our greatest need last year. Is there a part that I can send out to electronically, about email?
Bob, do you have your card?
Our, our village administrator's got all the cards. He deals them all, too.
Clerk does, too.
Clerk does, too, yeah.
Have you gone to the township meeting?
I, you know, that's where I thought I was going to.
She was, she thought she was coming to the township meeting.
First Monday of the month, seven o'clock.
I, I don't remember talking to you, but you know what? I'm getting old and I forget.
Should I forward that, or take that to them and talk to them?
I would definitely go to the township meeting.
I'll take, I'll take it to them.
Are you sure?
I'll personally, yes.
Thank you.
I won't forget that.
We did speak to the township.
Believe you me, I won't forget it.
Okay.
And you'll be on their, their, they have meet, uh, first Monday of, of March now.
Okay.
Same room, seven o'clock.
Same room, yeah, yeah.
We have the same meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But thank you very much.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Any issues? Okay. Reports of the commissions? Beautification has nothing? Fourth of July?
Clerk bids went out, though. Be opened on the twenty-eighth of February at the village hall at five P.M.
I have the orange meeting then we vote on the card. I just appointed on Fourth of July, maybe Janet can clarify this. They split the charitable gains and full tabs and jar games taxes out. And I assume that the full tabs and jar games taxes off on the Fourth of July, or is there other places?
I'm not aware of anybody else that does full tabs. They've never separated it out before, though. It's always been full tabs and jar games is one.
They don't tell you.
Deposit, but they don't ever give me any detail. It's just, it's been a report.
Have we ever gotten this before until we obtained a license, until somebody obtained a license?
We've always gotten the full tabs, jar games amount, which is about three hundred something a year. It's the first time we've gotten this amount.
How much should the Fourth of July pay the tax?
Off the top of my head, no. Doug, the bingo tax was much larger than that.
Like, maybe we bust a pair of flat dollars, a hundred dollars profit.
Oh, we appreciate it.
That's all. Hey, we bought the games, we're gonna have to finish them out.
Anything else for the die? Huh, ailerors?
Uh, nothing on the ailerors. Our meeting is coming up in a couple months, so I'll have more, more on that.
You have the commission?
Uh, we had our bowling event last month, Martin Luther King Day, went very busy and very well. We had about, almost two hundred and fifty kids attend that. And then coming up this Saturday, we got, which is usually one of our biggest events of the year, is the daddy-daughter dance. That's this Saturday night on the sixteenth. And then March night will be the mom-son dance. So then we're also, we've begun to work, and we have a date set, and a place is April thirteenth, we'll be having a fundraiser for adults at the Ambet's with a live band and some drinks and music and some food, so hopefully we'll get a good response for that. That's it.
Okay, that's it. Okay, we'll move to our committees. Finance?
Nelson, you ready? I can work around you if you're not ready. What's that? I can work around you if you weren't ready.
No, that's all right. I'm just looking up the tax. I'll give you in a minute. Fourth of July. The, okay, you've got the first page, it was in your packet. General, you notice there's dropped, there were three payrolls in the month of January. In the packet, Bob mentioned the mowing money going into villagers' escrow. One deposit was twelve hundred thirteen dollars reimbursement for mowing. Another one was two hundred, another one was four. So we're housing that money in that account so it can be paid out of that account when we mow various lots. Any questions about the first page? Okay, the commission bills. There's a total of a hundred seventy-eight thousand six ninety sixty-five cents. Any questions about any of those bills? Okay, just a couple of points of information. Last month, the, this page that was in your packet, you got an earlier printout of it, the final copy didn't get in. The number that I mentioned was correct at the board meeting. The bills were all there, but one of the subtotals didn't get in your total. I think that your total had sixty-seven thousand, and there was a subtotal of sixty, about the same amount, that didn't get into the total amount. All the bills were there, just the final total on the sheet that you had in your packet last month. I caught it after the meeting, when I was looking through the packet. Do you have any questions about that? And the other I'd like to make mention, about a year and a half ago, I mentioned to the village president and village administrator that I'd finish out the mayor's term in this position, but after that, I would not be expecting to continue this position. I, I did promise him I would finish out this term. I realize that I'd not say anything to the board, except to, to these two guys, so I just wanted to share that with you. I don't know, finishing out the mayor's term, and I don't plan to continue at this capacity. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nelson. Okay, I make a motion approving the treasurer's report and the financial activities for the prior month.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the treasurer's report. Any discussion? Questions? None? Roll call.
Weyland?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Various reports for?
Could I, could I mention the taxes? The full tab taxes for the Fourth of July is four hundred and twenty-two dollars, and bingo is four hundred and twenty dollars for the Fourth of July. So it's like it was last year.
No, but I still think.
No one else is playing jar games?
I still think it should be refunded to the Fourth of July, but it's.
And with that, I'll move on. Various reports for the month of December are enclosed for our review. Also, the bills were, for the month of January, were provided to us under separate email, and some additional modifications, anything bigger, Bob, obviously the attorney's fees. I noticed that was missing since we've been dealing with modifying some of the prior laws.
And we had bills for another hundred tons installed. We're still needing those additions that they were eighty-five thousand.
Yeah. There's no questions, I make a motion passing the bills for the month of January in a total of eighty-five thousand five hundred and ten dollars, or five hundred and ten dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the bills as presented. Discussion or questions yet? None? Roll call.
Leary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Weyland?
Yeah. Uh, the next item is chapter, title six of the village code. Nice packet, Bob. Title six, the village attorney, it was provided to us. We've also got the ordinance enending that title. Anything you want to sum up on this, Bob, that's major, because I think it's pretty much changed.
The seven things that are listed there are the major changes to Title Six. I don't want any terms going forward. Seven things are listed. We're finally going to have five bit regs. We re-listened station ordinance. We added a local ordinance violation for sound reapplication of the vehicle. We removed several older, unwelcome enforcement regulations regarding vagrants and latering. We made change to part nine police officer plans, still leaving the senate board, appoint a part nine police officer. And we reaffirm nineteen ninety-three ordinance, not allowing sales from the streets, that is nice withdrawal, which for some reason was never, never codified. It was a nineteen ninety-three ordinance that we always enforced, but never hoped for. So now it's going to be, these are the big changes, and it really cleans up Title Six. Basically, a police ordinance. Jeff noted that there were several changes that you may have to make to the dog ordinance. I'm not going to hold this something up to make those changes. We'll do a dog ordinance amendment sometime next year. Please say thanks.
I was gonna say something about dogs. Are you talking about like a vicious dog west?
A vicious dog and dangerous dog. The way I've been handling those right now is through Will County Animal Control, which has been going under state statute for those. It seems to be more teeth with going through Will County than there is just our local ordinance. And so far, that's worked well. Only have one dog that's been declared dangerous.
Okay, so these are, this is ordinance number eleven twenty-three.
Eleven seventy-three.
Eleven seventy-three, sorry. I thought you had it. Oh, that's, you got it. Okay, seventy-three.
I make a motion for ordinance eleven seventy-three, enending Title Six of the future village code.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? If none, roll call.
Weyland?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes.
Budgeting processes, I'm full swing with Mr. Barber. The village president's going through his first shot at it. The draft will be reviewed by myself and the department heads with the mayor and the administrator on March second, and then the board's budgeting meeting workshop will be March twenty-sixth. Anything else you want to add on that, Bob? We're pretty much still on time for that schedule, so. Consider resolution for participation of, in the state of Illinois Federal Surplus Property Program. This is a typical resolution we, we pass every year that allows us to purchase surplus items from the state and federal government. So I make a motion, resolution?
Two thousand thirteen oh four.
For the participation in the state of Illinois Federal Surplus Property Program.
Second.
Motion in second to participate in the state of Illinois surplus program. Any questions on that? Roll call.
Leary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Weyland?
Yes.
The next item on our list is authorizing the village treasurer to solicit proposals for refinancing the two thousand and two water tank and booster pump station loan. We've evaluated this in prior discussions a few years ago, and we're looking to pull the park fund and group it together, but now we're underneath, like I say, a, a level line where we can refinance and have acceptable payments over a ten-year loan. Any additions you guys want to add to this, Bob? Looks like it's, this is something we've been talking about for the longest time.
Nelson's gonna hand it up. I want to get some of this stuff cleaned up before the next one.
This is one we've been worrying about for the longest time. So I make a motion authorizing the village treasurer to solicit proposals for refinancing, refinancing the two thousand two water tank and booster station loan. Second.
Okay, motion in second to authorize the treasurer to solicit proposals on refinancing the water tank project. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just got one question.
Yeah.
Are, are we going to be soliciting, how many banks do you plan on soliciting? More, more than just the two in town, or?
The two local ones are certainly outside, they're on the back of the outside.
You do?
We did that initially, and we were initially looking at those loans. You solicited us five different locations when we were looking at what the interest rates were? Two were in town, and three, I think, were out of town, and they all were way above the numbers we were accepting.
The time that we were talking, we were looking two more out, the banks more comfortable, you know, making a commitment, six, nine months on interest rates. But we, if we, those banks we're not familiar with, they may want to check the cover, which drives up the cost, so you have to weigh all that. We're thinking about almost three quarters of a million dollars, seven hundred dollars, maybe thirty. And be good if we do with a signature. The, the other thing, I guess we don't, they may want more.
So how many are we seeking? How many banks are we gonna?
I haven't picked them up.
Okay. Leave it at your discretion, right?
More than two.
More than two.
There is data.
Okay. That was your question?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah. Any other questions? Not? Roll call.
Weyland?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
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 Leary?
Yes. Comcast annual report for two thousand is all we can include for our review. And the village attorney provided us the Title Seven. Do we have that right, Bob?
If.
Near there. For municipal code, the Title Seven of municipal code, and it'll be on our agenda for March eleventh, eighteen.
It will be formally considered if no one has any major comments.
It's a much shorter section than Title VII. Very quickly, we should be ahead.
Can I end my report?
Okay. How about safety?
Yeah, police department monthly report for January is included for your review. The police department annual report for 2012 was provided at the meeting which we got in the package.
Well, Gunn chief, any comments?
Well, probably the same format as the previous years, the annual report. And we get a lot of information from the previous years in there for the purpose of comparison. It's been a lot easier to read than it was for us, because we're much less used to figures and some of them are in the package. Such kind of DUI things, so. A bunch of...
You're going to start to see hopefully articles in the newspaper with a copy of this in the newspaper along with an article just making people aware of what's going on that we're looking for donations, not only donations on the money side but also donations of time and materials and different things like that. We met on January 31st, our next meeting is going to be February 28th, so you're going to start to see press on the cancer awareness garden. Where is your meeting? It's here.
It's at ABC News.
Oh, is it? Okay. Well, we can change it before you can meet. Yeah, no problem. We're looking into, I said why create new forms, you know, because we can look at the forms for the brick orderings and things from the Veterans Memorial and different things like that. So, we're moving forward, we want to make sure that the word gets out. Any questions about the cancer memorial?
Good question. Somebody was asking me, they were taking minutes of the last meeting, what's the width of this, about 25 feet? They didn't, I guess a minute's more than clear or something about the width and the height. It's higher than it is wide, right?
It's, I think it's 14 feet as far as the total.
Yeah, I thought that was 35.
It's 32 or 35 feet.
Okay, okay.
It's 32, 35 feet wide as far as the.
35 feet wide?
Yeah, with the pavers and plantings and everything else.
But the metal, metal.
Oh, the ribbon?
The ribbon, yeah.
Ribbon's going to be, I think the actual ribbon's going to be 12 feet, there's going to be a two-foot rise from the platform.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's going to be anchored into the platform with casing, but that's how big it's going to be. I think the width on the ribbon is probably going to be four or five feet, I would think. We're going to come up with models, you know, small models so we can see how it all fits before the whole thing is created. You know, we're looking at different materials to make the ribbon out of also.
There's an exercise station there that I believe will have to relocate.
Yes, there's a.
Yes. Are you volunteering for that relocation? Do you have all the.
Yeah, sure.
You know, buddy, I volunteered you and I went out there to look and I thought it was going to be a small pad, but those pads are large, the concrete pads, so if you can do something about that to relocate it, we want to relocate it a little bit further down the path.
We can't get rid of it, we have to move it because I just signed a document with Ossle, I think an aerial photograph from the park.
Yes.
Make sure everything was still there, so we can't start ripping things out of the park, we've got to keep it.
That's one thing that was drummed into my head when we went for that Ossle brand, you know, even down there in Springfield, they said, you know, you can't change this. And remember we were talking about the wild grasses and the wildflowers and different things like that, they, you know, there were some that wanted to mow them down, but you really can't because that's part of the whole Ossle brand. What were you going to say, buddy?
There is one, you know, blank knockout, that's a concrete knockout, but it's usually, that's where they've been staging black dirt at.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's the bocce wall.
Huh?
Court, that's supposed to be the bocce wall.
Yeah, I would rather move it down on the west side because there's nothing on that whole stretch, you know, from the north field to Fireman's Tube.
Yeah, you'll just have to pour any pad and drop it there.
Okay, just a circle one, you done with it? Yeah. All right.
Okay. And that's it on the memorial. So, we're still planning a groundbreaking at the Tractors for a Cure in July. Fireman's Park benches, they'll be ordered this week. The thing I've been investigating is I don't think we're going to be able to pick them up, I think they're going to be delivered. The reason for that is the name of the company was Highland and we thought it was Highland Indiana to pick it up, you know, which it isn't. So, it's going to be coming from, I think, Florida.
What do you thought of your strike?
I'd want to run through.
Oh, you want to go down and get them?
I don't, sure. Being the mayor.
So, that's the update on the benches, they'll be coming in, we still got some time before we install those. Regulation signage and addresses for the village parks, the chief's going to check into, well, Stat Park yet as far as an address. I know there were different opinions as far as if it should be or if it could be the school address being it's right next to the school. School address is on church, the park's actually on Cardinal Creek Boulevard, so we're going to check into that. We're also going to talk about what needs to be put on those signs, address, you know, different things like that.
Let us know when the sign can be moved.
Okay. Spring newsletter, anything to add on the spring newsletter?
Just, you know, our council approved the spring newsletter, and we had any comments?
The big one's going to be to change our refugee program, whatever that change is going to be, that has to be done soon. In other words, you have to get the word out so people start implementing the changes.
Mentioned as for.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about that one.
Mentioned somewhere else.
Yeah, that's my report. Any building zoning?
Concerning ordinance of any of the zoning courts pertaining to digital signs, the last village board workshop with the PCC was on January 28th, releasing one change to the ordinance as recommended by the PCC, which was section 11.011M6, was amended to read "All messages shall remain static for at least three seconds with no fading in and out between messages." This ordinance is now ready for adoption. Anybody have any questions after the meeting?
I just had a question raised, if you could ask this ordinance, do you go after the, let's say, be as a fair lesson, three seconds on the clock? Do you write in the courtesy letter and ask them to abide by the ordinance, especially these programs, timely for this change? So, the legal question is, I don't think we would legally force it on a busy time when we're mature asking.
Well, the people may have realized that are modified, it's just, are they going to feel like the village's requirements are not the advantages if they don't, well, the problems if they don't, anything else they need, they're never going to have the village prove, so most of the time they're just going to accept. But we should write them a letter.
So, I'd like to make a motion approving ordinance number.
1174.
1174, amending the zoning court pertaining to digital signs.
Sorry. Any discussion or questions yet?
Clear.
No?
Eric?
Yes.
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 Concerning ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
Second. Any discussion or questions about the agreements? None, low call.
William?
Yes.
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 Consider an ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
Second. Any discussion or questions about the agreements? None, low call.
William?
Yes.
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 Consider an ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
Second. Any discussion or questions about the agreements? None, low call.
William?
Yes.
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 Consider an ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
No?
Yes.
Consider an ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
No?
Yes.
Consider an ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
No?
Yes.
Consider an ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
No?
Yes.
Consider an ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
No?
Yes.
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 Oh, is it?
Okay.
Well, we can change it.
Before you can meet.
Yeah, no problem. We're looking into, I said, why create new forms, you know, because we can look at the forms for the brick orderings and things from the Veterans Memorial and different things like that. So, we're moving forward, we want to make sure that the word gets out. Any questions about the cancer memorial?
Good question. Somebody was asking me, they were taking minutes of the last meeting, what's the width of this, about 25 feet? They didn't, I guess a minute's more than clear or something about the width and the height. It's higher than it is wide, right?
It's, I think it's 14 feet as far as the total.
Yeah, I thought that was.
It's 32 or 35 feet.
Okay, okay.
It's 32, 35 feet wide as far as.
35 feet wide?
Yeah, with the pavers and plantings and everything else.
But the metal, metal. But the metal, metal.
Oh, the ribbon?
The ribbon, yeah.
Ribbon's going to be, I think the actual ribbon's going to be 12 feet. There's going to be a two-foot rise from the platform.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's going to be anchored into the platform with casing. But that's how big it's going to be. I think the width on the ribbon is probably going to be four or five feet, I would think. We're going to come up with models, you know, small models so we can see how it all fits before the whole thing is created. You know, we're looking at different materials to make the ribbon out of also.
There's an exercise station there that I believe will have to relocate.
Yes, there's a.
Yes. Are you volunteering for that relocation? You have all the.
Yeah, sure.
You know, buddy, I volunteered you and I went out there to look and I thought it was going to be a small pad, but those pads are large, the concrete pads. So if you can do something about that to relocate it, we want to relocate it a little bit further down the path.
We can't get rid of it. We have to move it because I just signed a document with Ossle. I think an aerial photograph of the park. Make sure everything was still there. So we can't start ripping things out of the park. We've got to keep it.
That's one thing that was drummed into my head when we went in for that Ossle brand, you know, even down there in Springfield, they said, you know, you can't change this. And remember, we were talking about the wild grasses and the wildflowers and different things like that. They, you know, there were some that wanted to mow them down, but you really can't because that's part of the whole Ossle brand. What were you going to say, buddy?
There is one, you know, blank knockout, that's a concrete knockout, but it's usually, that's where they've been staging black dirt at.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's the bocce wall.
Huh?
Court, that's supposed to be the bocce wall.
Yeah, I would rather move it down on the west side because there's nothing on that whole stretch, you know, from the north field to Fireman's Tube.
Yeah, you'll just have to pour any pad and drop it there.
Okay, just a circle one, you done with it? Yeah. All right.
Okay. And that's it on the memorial. So we're still planning a groundbreaking at the Tractors for a Cure in July. Fireman's Park benches, they'll be ordered this week. The thing I've been investigating is I don't think we're going to be able to pick them up. I think they're going to be delivered. The reason for that is the name of the company was Highland and we thought it was Highland Indiana to pick it up, you know, which it isn't. So it's going to be coming from, I think, Florida.
What do you thought of your strike?
I'd want to run through.
Oh, you want to go down and get them?
I don't. Sure. Being the mayor.
So that's the update on the benches. They'll be coming in. We still got some time before we install those. Regulation signage and addresses for the village parks. The chief's going to check into, well, Stat Park yet as far as an address. I know there were different opinions as far as if it should be or if it could be the school address being, it's right next to the school. School address is on church. The park's actually on Cardinal Creek Boulevard. So we're going to check into that. We're also going to talk about what needs to be put on those signs, address, you know, different things like that.
Let us help and order the sign to be moved.
Spring newsletter? Anything to that on the spring newsletter?
Just, you know, our council report, spring newsletter. And we had the comments.
The big ones are going to be the change in our refugee program, whatever that change is going to be. That has to be done soon. In other words, we have to get the word out so people start implementing changes.
Mentioned as for.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about that one.
Mention somewhere else.
Yeah, that's my report. My name, Gilling was on it.
Consider the ordinance of any of the zoning court pertaining to digital signs. The last village board workshop with the PCC was on January 28th. Using one change, the ordinance as recommended by the PCC, which was section 11.011M6, was amended to read, "All messages shall remain static for at least three seconds with no fading in and out between messages." This ordinance is now ready for adoption. Anybody have any questions after the meeting that maybe?
I just had one question raised. If you ask this ordinance, do you go after the, let's say, we can, as a fair lesson, three seconds on the clock? Do you write in the courtesy letter and ask to abide by the ordinance, especially these programs, timely before this change? So the legal question is, now, if you could legally force it on a specific time, or we mature asking.
It's all the county meetings.
Well, the people may have realized that are modified. It's just, I think, they're like, the village's requirements are not the advantages if they don't, well, the problems if they don't, anything else they need, they're never going to have the village approve. So most of the time, they're just going to accept. But we should write them a letter.
So I'd like to make a motion approving ordinance number.
1174.
1174, amending the zoning court pertaining to digital signs.
Sorry. Any discussion or questions yet?
Claire?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
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 Concerning ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Peatone at Crawford Avenue or Peatone Beach School District Line. Again, the agreement was enclosed and the ordinance was authorized for drafting back in November. Who noticed that been published that this actually be taken at this meeting? The agreement will be given to Grant Park to approve and then reported with the county of King Key and Hill. Would like to make a motion authorizing ordinance number, approving ordinance number.
1175.
1175, authorizing a board agreement with the village of Grant Park and County Line.
Second. Any discussion or questions about the agreements? None, low call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Claire?
Yes.
Consider an ordinance authorizing a boundary agreement with the village of Peatone at Crawford Avenue or Peatone Beach School District Line. Again, the agreement was enclosed and the ordinance was authorized for drafting back in November. And who knows, it was also published, we're very taking action at this meeting. With approved, this agreement will be given to Peatone to approve and will also be reported with Phil County. Make a motion authorizing ordinance number 1176, authorizing a board agreement with the village of Peatone at Crawford Avenue or, which is known as Peatone Beach School District Line.
Sorry. Question made second. For the boundary agreement, Peatone. Any questions, comments, low call?
Claire?
Yes.
Yes. Can I ask you?
Judge?
Yes.
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 Building department, what the report was imposed for your review and the code enforcement month report is imposed for your review also. It should also be noted that the building escrow balances have increased. This is due to liens being placed paid for, for lease control for the past years. We can now use these funds for early lease control without affecting the street department budget where these funds came from in the past. There's approximately $6,500 is available for this purpose. The PCC scheduled meeting is for February 28th and the items on the agenda, it will be the variance for the cycle exceeding maximum height for Dutch American Foods and request for events extending maximum height in Hones Chase subdivision. I have another question on that particular one. Did he pay the sudden 50?
Both did.
I'm sorry?
Both.
Both of them did?
Okay.
And did we find out that he's putting in the pool first prior to the fence?
He's putting in the fence before the pool.
Was that what Julie had recommended? Didn't she say she was worried about the pool not being?
Well, that's all part of the PCC deliberations. You can't get into that now.
Okay. And letter of support from the village attorney for HOA position on the maintenance responsibility as requested by the audience is imposed for review. This letter is presented to the district and Mr. Ring, this is serious. And that ends my report.
Is there any response to that?
I don't know. I spoke to Mr. Rock, was it Belucable, Bob, Moncomethable? And he was going to meet with the HOA president and Mr. Rivas and he had this letter at that time and it sounded like everything was going to be okay because the monuments were a big question.
He conferred that the monuments were on his property.
Right, they were on his property, right. And I don't think there's going to be a problem. Hopefully, it should be in the works of turning it over, so. I haven't heard anybody. No news, good news maybe. Nobody's been to the monument, so evidently it must be something that's bothering us a long time. And if there's anything you or certain, so that may, it's moving forward, so.
I just want to bring up this builder's escrow. That's an old escrow company we had where builders would pay for sidewalks and plantings if they wanted to seal in winter time. But we threw this weekly money into the escrow so we can have a perpetual care account for vacant lots and remoting of habits because in the past, we would charge Buddy's street department for those lawn mower things. He would get charged and then the revenue would come in, we just showed his rep, we never budgeted for that. So now we're going to treat it as an escrow. We have a $6,500 bankroll in there now that we can use to roll that account as it goes on. Because you never know when the leads will be paid. You can pay five, six years after the action has taken place. But all of a sudden now, leads from '09, '08, '09 have come in. So we're going to bank all that money because that money was spent years ago. So you're not reimbursing it and it's done. We're doing escrow, we use that. Because we're still going to have a continuing problem with leads. I guarantee you, you're going to have a problem in Antarctic Home and some of the models, you're going to have problems in some of these MGM homes, and we're going to have to deal with it.
That is my report.
Okay. On the builder's president's report. Item number one, consider a motion authorizing the village attorney to draft a ten-year agreement with a select refuse hauler. As you, I think everybody was at the workshop, were you?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I'm who's there.
And there was a lot of discussion on, there were two proposals that were brought forth by Bob and myself, which was proposed to the other two communities. At that time, we took a consensus, should we say, as a vote, we got the consensus and at that time, we desired to possibly stay with Star. But since that time, the linens spoke. Since that time, I guess there's been some discussion with some residents and maybe there's a different thought on it. And like I said, my recommendation was to go with Ally to begin with, but at that time, we discussed, a lot of people said, well, we're going to stay with Wofy God and why should I pay for something that I don't get? But I was looking at the whole community as far as yard lease proposals concerned. So I know one of our trustees, John, you can take it from here. You came to the village hall, I don't know how many days later, and I guess you had discussed it with a lot of your people out in your area.
We can, we can agree later, yeah.
And thought that the yard lease program is probably the way to go. With that, I'm going to open it up. Can anybody on the floor? I guess this is another workshop, so.
I'll just kind of bring it up. What had happened was after the workshop, which I think it's a productive thing that we had, but at the same time, I think it also gives us an opportunity without actually taking a vote on it. And we sat up here and I could say, I sat up here and I stated what I thought was what the residents wanted. After leaving here with much discussion, I went back and started asking some residents, friends, neighbors, and I probably talked to at least 50 people and just kind of gave them a quick two-minute synopsis of what we were looking at. And with this being such a big deal, this being something that's going to be affecting residents for the next 10 years, to much surprise my own, I did not get the response I thought I would get. Many of the residents I spoke to, I would say probably about 75 to 80% of them, said that they would use the yard waste, they would appreciate that service at the cost. And at the time, I basically told them that approximately $2 more a month. Well, first year, going with Ally with providing a yard waste collection, it's dead even in price with hedging it off of our surplus in the, you know, our reserves in the refuse fund. So it doesn't actually hit $2.50 a month difference until year 10, which is kind of eye-opening to me after actually speaking to the residents and finding out what the residents wanted rather than be just guessing what they wanted. To, much to my surprise, and I will sit here and say it, that I have changed my mind. I think yard waste is the way to go with this. And it's with feedback from the residents. I don't know if anyone else had a chance to ask other people and get their thoughts, but that's kind of what happened. So I went in and explained this to Paul and to the mayor and Bob and that's where we're at. Mr. Smith, if you recall that night when we came to, we might consensus both, Santa and Donovan. And one of the reasons why I was not 100% sure which way to go was for that very same reason is while the majority of the board did not use the service, some of us did. And the question that I had that night, and I couldn't answer at the moment, was how many people would use the service or aren't currently using the service? We decided that if we estimate 4,000 bags and there's 10 bags in a bundle, roughly we have 400 bundles that go out every year along with the 70 totes, we are all round figures that we have. We have approximately 500 homes in theory, because we have nothing to back it up with, that are possibly using the yard waste program. That's approximately one-third of 1,500 homes. Am I correct about 1,500 homes? Yeah, 14, so. Yeah, so roughly one-third. So the question becomes is, if we do this, are we, is it going to go to the majority of the people are going to begin to use the service for $20 a year after the 10-year period? I too wanted to go home and ask individuals what they thought. And one individual, which I kind of figured this was going to happen, says, well, what do you ask and what do you do with your grass? I dump it in the field. And I said, continue it.
Yeah, he would do that. So then, and then that's going to be the question is that will we be able to stop dumping in the field, which technically they can't do, withdraws, buys it, draws another town and so on and so forth? And in fact, we'll give it an opportunity for the residents to begin to use the service. I tend to think that possibly we're at one-third, we would tip over to the majority of the people using the grass service. I was comfortable with what you decided that night, but I wasn't sure that we discussed it in great detail at length to make a great decision and has, well, I'm glad it, Dr. Corus came back, so let's reconsider it. So here we are again. One of my concerns is quality because over the past years, I think this, we've had great service.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's been any complaints. Everything's picked up, everything's a timely matter. You know, you look at the village this morning, I don't know how many trucks come in here, but I saw at least three, four trucks in here today taking care of the garbage. My concern is, you know, when you go with a new company, you're locked in for 10 years. We have a track record with what we have had. What's going to happen if we don't like the service after the first or second year? That's one of my concerns.
Of course, we didn't, we didn't know that when we discovered it out at Homewood disposal many, many years ago. It shouldn't be that way, but I mean, we didn't know what kind of service we were going to get. And as you recall, in the past, we had umpteen different refuse haulers coming into town and our idea was to get it down to one hauler because they were tearing up our streets and, but, you know, we don't know, you don't know what you're getting, you don't know what you're getting. Go ahead.
Now, Bob, you had a chance to check on some references on Ally. No complaints at Grant Park, no complaints at Creek from Ally.
I spoke to a woman today from Donovan. And Donovan's not much of a town, but she took blood out of my arm. And we were talking about yard, about waste and they had Ally and she's very happy with it. She says, what we put out there, they pick up, we've never had any problems with it. But that's Donovan, that's only 350 population, it's not a big metropolis, so. I know Grant Park hasn't had any issues with them. I think they've been in Creek for quite some time, so.
But we have a 10-year track record with Homewood, too.
Yeah, what's that?
We have a 10-year track.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
It seemed to be very cooperative if there was a question.
And again, I don't know what's going to happen 10 years from now. Maybe Homewood won't be around, maybe Ally won't be around. I don't know, you know? We don't know about anything. I mean, we, there's no certainty in anything, really. The only thing I could say is, while I'm around here, if you would change, if we don't get the service, believe you me, there's going to be heck of an increase. Because, you know, why would you ever give something up if you had something good? You want, you know, the same thing.
Right.
I understand that, but it's up to us to, you know.
In this contract, can it be broken or is this a 10-year contract with?
We didn't, we didn't break it down like that. We didn't break it down like that.
It's 10 years.
It's a 10-year contract.
Because they.
We had a five-year proposal. We had a five-year proposal.
Yeah.
And what was the price difference on the five-year?
I don't, boy, I don't recall. I don't recall.
Is there anything in the contract that says you can break up the cost? So in other words, if we decide that we have a problem with Ally and we ask them to address it, we can show documentation that we addressed it and then follow.
Typically, they first post a cash monitor.
Yeah.
And that's negotiated, 25,000, 50,000, something like that. They post a bucket. And then we can put in the contract breach language, of course, if they don't pick it up, there's service problems. Usually it calls an arbitrator, we get to our arbitration. But there are provisions where you can get out of the contract. And if there, go ahead. If you put that breach language in there, obviously, I mean, if it's anything we need to consider doing, you'd have the documentation because we would be doing it because there would be complaints. So we would have complaints in the little hall, which I think an arbitrator would absolutely have to look at and take into consideration. And just to get back to it, I mean, my biggest thing was just that, and I'll sit here and say it, I said it at the night of our workshop, that in the past, I have not used the service. And I'll say it, that I honestly don't think I will use the service moving forward. But the fact of the matter is, I can't ignore when I asked the residents what they wanted and was told by the residents, but it was not by a close margin. Like I said, it was 75 to 80% of the people I asked, that I'd love it if my grass was good. And I even had a bunch of them, which we brought up, the fact that we have areas of town that don't get or don't use the brush and leaf pickup. Even had a couple of people say, you know what, it kind of takes some of the sting out of paying that every month, at least if they were picking up my grass clippings. So I, I'm not up here, like I said, I still don't think I would use the service myself, but that's not why I'm up here.
Just driving around the old part of town, and I haven't been around the new part, but right now, a day like today, you've got a lot of wind, you've got sticks and people like to keep their lawn, they pile them up. And Buddy, I believe Buddy goes around when they chip every other week, they got to pick up these little piles of sticks. And I mean, it takes time. Now, with this proposal, Ally, you put in an old garbage can or some kind of can, put them in there, starting April 1st, I think they pick them up. I think that's the date. We don't have to pick them up, they pick them up, that's part of it regardless. I think even in the other proposal, if you had those sticks, I think you had to buy a bag to put them in and that was $2.50. We got to stop and look at the different cost of the week. And just thinking about my neighbor, who grew, I would say he uses probably a bag and a half a week approximately and you figure 13, 14 weeks, so it's going to be a savings in that respect. And I know some other neighbors that.
The one thing I just want to state, and I said it at the workshop, we're believing that if the residents have this as an option, they're going to put those things in there. They're not. Because if they're paying for it, they're going to say, well, the village is supposed to pick up those sticks. You're assuming they're going to use it for that reason. The concern I have is you've got a lot of residents on fixed incomes, you're increasing the cost that they're going to get hit. And if they don't bag or they don't water where their lawn is that green, what's going to happen is the residents who are strapped for their money are going to be paying into this pool and not using the service. I reiterate what I say in that board meeting. I think this is the wrong way to go. I think if someone needs a service, they pay for it. You pay as you go. That's my belief. I think by forcing a resident to participate in this program for leaf pickup, if they want to do it, buy a bag. If not, it's what it is. But to think that they're going to go and say, you know what, I got these twigs, I better stick them in there. No, they're not. They're going to stick them on the side of the road. You're hoping they migrate to that point, but there's no guarantee.
Same token then. Then the people that don't have leaves, why should they pay? Why don't the people that's got the leaves pay for the amount of leaves that they put out there then?
Take the whole cost of everybody that's captured and in and out and divide it amongst those that are getting it.
You're not going to gain anything. It's, it don't make sense.
But right now, right now, that key is there, right? You're adding this into their, into the refuse cost.
And I'm paying for leaf pickup and I mulch my leaves. Why should I pay for that? I want a rebate. I mulch them.
You should take it up with the administration.
No, I'm just serious. I mean.
I am, right now.
You've got to look at a bigger picture.
Right now, if that was the case, then get rid of it all. But right now, what sits in front of us is not what's going on with leaf pickup. What sits in front of us is the surcharge that we're going to put on people who are past strapped for a situation that's going to benefit a third of the village, not the whole village. Because not everybody bags their grass.
And I think you're probably wrong, Brian, because there might be people that will bag their grass now if they're going to think the service is going to be provided. They don't want to spend $2.50. They don't wanna spend two dollars and fifty cents for a bag and put it out there.
But if, but right now, if they don't even bag it, Paul, you're saying, right now, I'm not paying anything. So I can use that two dollars and fifty cents or whatever a bag I'm gonna be doing, and not apply it to that, because I'm not doing that.
Did you ask any residents?
Yes, in different areas of town.
Yeah, what response did you get?
The response I got was, they don't bag and they don't wanna pay it.
Every one of them? Really, every, every one?
Yeah. Cause it's, 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 it's a fifty-fifty chance, John, you walk up and you ask them, they don't bag their grass. And if, and if they do, they've got a service that does it.
A lot of people I spoke to said they, they didn't, but would. And the reason why they don't is because of the cost. And like I said, ten years down the road, ten years, the difference per month is the cost of one bag. Once, not a bundle, one bag. That's assuming that over the next ten years, the cost of a bag isn't gonna go up. That's what one bag costs right now, ten years from now. That's the difference. One bag per month. At today's cost, not cost ten years from now. That's the difference. And right now, year one, there's no difference, it's the exact same cost. No matter what option we choose, the residents, their cash grab will be looking.
That's a qualified opinion, because we're hedging rates with cash. You gotta look at the pure rates charged by the vendors. Because I've really front loaded hedge on the, on the yard waste option, to make it the same price.
Look, we are gonna be hedging, correct?
Right, and it's gonna go up a buck a month, every year on average.
But bottom line is, when it's all said and done, after ten years, twenty dollars a year for, for grass pickup, that's without hedging.
For yard waste, it's just like grass.
Yard waste.
No, you, yeah, you're, uh.
No matter what, both companies are gonna go up eighty dollars for garbage. After eighty dollars of garbage, it's gonna be a hundred and three hours if you go with Ally, which is twenty dollars more a year after ten years.
The difference is a hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy. Over the ten-year period on pure rates, not the hedge. No, we're about to hedge, yeah.
No, take, take the hedge, take everything else out of this, bottom line is that both companies are gonna go up eighty dollars for garbage.
And you said that's what?
Ten years.
Hundred eighty-nine dollars? Yeah, if we take, Ally's yard waste proposal over ten years will cost the resident two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents. Ten years of, of garbage and yard waste recycling. Ten years of just yard waste, or just garbage recycling.
I got it right here.
Home would be one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Nineteen twenty, minus nineteen seventy-three, eighty-eight, divided by twelve months, sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents a year. Less than twenty.
Are these in stone, or are these negotiable?
They're in stone.
Yeah, they're in stone.
If you were to go back to Homewood and say, hey, look, this is what we got from Ally, can't be able to match it?
We can't do that, we've already kind of basically.
It would violate your policy that you would not, you don't wanna do that. You're looking at a Homewood, no yard waste, Ally needs yard waste, that's a.
They each came, came in with their best shot, and that was it.
The sad thing, Bob, is everything that everybody's saying, I think is, is right on, I think we're right, that we're, you spoke with Homewood, they did an excellent service over the years. Ryan, I think you're right about, you have somebody who can afford twenty dollars, if for ten years, you know, I'm not in that position, I'm sure somebody is, and I'm sure it would hurt them every bit. But when it comes down to it, is again, and what is the majority of people gonna do? I have to think that eventually that number's gonna go over fifty percent, so the majority of the people are gonna use it.
We, we have to look at, what's best for the majority of the community. Not, not, and I understand people on fixed income, I'm on fixed income, I don't wanna pay a dime more, I don't wanna pay an increase, you know? But you gotta face reality. And, and you know what, what am I giving for it? Maybe I use it, maybe I don't, maybe there's people out there that, that, that'll be grateful for this, you know? And then there's people that say, why am I paying for it? What's good for the community, and not, not what's good for yourself, or myself, or anybody else, what's good for the community? And I think that's what you have, that's what I looked at, that's why I recommended Ally to begin with. I thought it was better for the community, I thought we could take a load off of public works people somewhat. Hopefully, we can get out of the leaf business someday, I don't know if we ever will or not. And we can get out, allow the brush, or the chipping, and stuff like that. And another thing is the uncertainty in five years from now. I don't know what's gonna cost you to get rid of some of the yard waste that you're hauling away right now. The leaves, I don't know if you're gonna have a place for it, you might, you might have to go thirty, forty miles to get rid of them, I don't know. That's an uncertainty. Everybody likes a leaf pickup, but nobody wants to pay for it. Oh, it's, they're gonna pay for it, one way or another.
But I laid this out to one of the residents that I was talking to, ironically, without me even mentioning it, is, is he brought up, and he figured out himself that, about listing below, I mean, public works department, and so on and so forth. And I didn't even bring it up, they thought it up themselves. Granted, that's another thing that we have to address, that if this succeeds, and it goes through, and work's successful, and, you know, that's something else that maybe we can look at, maybe there's another savings at that end that we can do for, for the taxpayers. But that's another subject that, you know, we dug bad down the road, what he thought of it himself.
If we're able to wean that program down.
What?
If we're able to wean that program down.
Yeah.
The savings to the resident. In comparison to sitting here talking about a dollar a month, or seventy-five cents a month, or something like that. That's an opportunity to provide savings to residents. If we can wean a program like that, that is expensive, to where rather than weekly, we're doing it bi-weekly, or aver, or, rather than bi-weekly, we're doing it once a month, that's how we can create savings for residents.
Like I said, the leaf pickup, if we can, if we can streamline the leaf pickup, maybe even start weaning people off of, depending on the village to pick them up, and putting them in, in cans, and, and having the refuse hauler pick them up. That's that much less we have to do, I, I, to me, I, I just, I look at it that way. You know, with, with time going on, the area of town that you're picking up leaves is going to double. You take Hunter's Chase, MDM, Berry Crossings, we're gonna be patrolling those streets. Right now, we're only patrolling or basically picking up the old part of town. Your volume is going to.
That's, that's, that's another good point, Mayor, is with the subdivision, such as Hunter's Chase, you're talking about a subdivision that's technical. In the next couple of years, a lot of these trees are starting to grow to where they're dropping leaves. But we're not talking about huge piles that these people would be bringing to the street. If, if we had this service and they were able to, because they've never really used a curbside service before, or anything like that, and it's as simple as them putting it in one can, and them fitting everything they got into one can, they're gonna be doing that. And I think that's gonna save Buddy a ton, where public works isn't running up and down those streets in the next couple of years, too.
You know, for some of those older sections of town, you know, these bins that, that they're proposing to put out for the leaf and grass clippings, there's only so many leaves that that can hold. You, you look at these yards, and these yards, you know, the, the streets are loaded, they're not gonna fit in there, so what are they gonna do then? You know, with the remainder of their leaves?
I'm not saying we're gonna continue, we will still continue to pick up leaves, but, you know, I know there's a couple of individuals in town, their leaves fall off of their trees, probably what, Buddy, three, four weeks before anybody else has even begun to fall, and they pile them up on the side of the street. I don't know if you're aware of this. This way, they got the opportunity to put them in a container and get rid of them. Those leaves sit out there, and they blow in other people's yards, and they don't like that. Like I said, I guess, I drive around, I see some of this stuff, and, like I said, if they would have that opportunity, they wouldn't have to mess with it at all.
I just had a question, when you were talking about the bags, do they have to be the brown paper bags?
They have to be the brown paper bags.
Is that where you wear them on ours, you don't leave both?
Yeah, they're about three cents a bag.
But they can take them all, because everybody, no matter what, we're getting these brand-new totes. Or, everybody's got garbage cans right now.
Not for grass, though, the grass, you have to pay thirty-six dollars.
Well, he says use the old cans, John, you can, you can use your old cans, they said, oh, provide this with a sticker on it.
I'm sorry.
And I think you can get more than one sticker, too.
Yeah.
Where, what you're concerned is they can get more than one sticker.
Yeah.
And you can't.
Yeah, four, four cans, they put stickers on each one of them, they'll pick them up. And I'm sure you only need one, you know, if I know they're always saying, whatever. If you're gonna get, if you don't want one here and one there, but. Okay, I, I, we've discussed this thing, we're moving pace. And again, like, I, I can't make a move, but, but I thought Ally made the best, best proposal for what I thought through the first community street. And we need a motion authorizing the village attorney to draft a ten-year agreement.
I'll make a motion authorizing the village attorney to draft a ten-year agreement with Ally as a refuse hauler, providing yard waste option.
Second.
Hey, I've got a motion and a seconded, and this is for Ally for being our refuse hauler for the next ten years. And again, wording of the contract is very important, that if, for some unforeseen reason, we are not happy, we have a lot of problems, we have a chance to get out.
It's up to your attorney to draft.
And that's what we'll have to make sure.
Good idea.
I just said, that's, that's a big thing. Any discussion? Okay, with that, let's do the roll call.
Really?
No.
Homer?
No.
Peres?
Yes.
Semensky?
Yes.
Garrett?
No.
Larry?
No.
They beat it. Uh, the alternate is Homewood disposal, I think we should have a motion on, on.
We'll need to make a decision, because time is.
That's right, so tonight's the night. So then I would need a motion authorizing the other vendor to draft an agreement with the other vendor for ten years. So no votes, I would assume, would, would make a motion to that effect. Do so when we're on? We have a second? Second.
Please state the motion, the title.
This is having Homewood disposal as our, as our revenues contractor for the next ten months.
So this would be that option one that we discussed at workshop?
All right. Okay, discussion, questions, comments? None, roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Peres?
No.
Homer?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Also concerned, authorizing the village attorney to draft an ordinance, establishing the refuse rates for residents in Village Beach for the next ten years, need a motion on that.
Hi, explain the rates.
Yes.
Uh, it's in the report, rates related to the first year would be fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, escalating in the fifth year, twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Seventh year.
Yes, twenty dollars and fifty cents in the tenth year, we're going to use forty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars, and our fifty thousand dollars available in the hedge. But I'm gonna save, save a couple thousand in case the town grows, I can apply that dollars to those new residents. Assuming this contract also goes through, the village will continue selling the yard waste bags, we're going to try to push that out, and the vendors warn. Because it's becoming a bourbon sell-in all, because the vendors, the stores in town sell at a higher price. Um, but tho, those are the rates that we're gonna charge, and we will still offer for sale stickers and bags at the village hall, and we're gonna make sure everyone's charging the same price. So they're gonna go up. No, we're gonna try to get the stores to look down, because if we're velocity here, everybody comes to the village hall, and they don't use the stores, and they should be going to the stores, and looking at hardware, and looking at gross. Not, yeah, it's pretty. You wanna be on, you wanna be on the yard waste. If this would be.
Option one hedge rate on the last, the final page of.
This would be ordinance number eleven seventy-seven.
No, we're gonna correct it, we're gonna back. We're authorizing.
Okay, authorized, exactly.
So which one are you using, Bob?
We're using that hedge rate. Option one, home rate, with the final rate being fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents the first year, twenty dollars and fifty cents in the tenth year. The, the total hedge is gonna, we're gonna use forty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents in reserves over ten years to hedge the rate. Uh, I have fifty thousand available, but I have to save a couple thousand aside, and if the town grows, I'll need more money to apply to the hedge. But I need also to get that rate up to where it should be in the tenth year, so we don't have sticker shop again ten years.
You will, hey, Doc.
Well, you don't need to, that's for me, but.
Okay, consider authorizing the village attorney to draft the ordinance, need a motion on that.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, third, authorizing the village attorney to draft the ordinance. Discussion, questions? None, roll call.
Raymond?
Yes.
Homer?
Yes.
Yes.
Semensky?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, results of the interregional meeting, I think everybody, anybody read their minutes, I think it pretty well covers all the issues that we discussed. Billy Ann Expressway, there's not really much new going on at that. South Bourbon Airport, haven't heard anything. Wounded Warrior Program, Bob, you know more than I do, I, I have contact.
We don't know exactly who this Wounded Warrior, you've been told on March eighth, it's going to be dedicated, we have another board meeting for March eleventh. We thought it would be appropriated, we'll need to do something, maybe wait, water the sewer bill for a year, somebody's gonna talk about this in here, but, you know. The village should step up to the plate and do something, uh, as a movement for this Wounded Warrior house. I don't know what you guys wanna do. We should have something done first, like.
Who was it, Scott?
In any case, East subdivision. I don't wanna give the exact address, but, 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 I'm high with home right now, for the.
Is he a resident of East?
He will be.
I mean, was, is, was he?
No, probably not. They relocate the family here, uh, they don't need the house to be individual.
We, we don't even know he has a family yet.
No, we don't.
We don't, so, I, you know, it's premature, I guess, until we find out particularly, because the story, you get misconstrued, and, and until we find out, it's particularly.
Okay, but we don't have another meeting, so I'm, I won't be doing anything for you.
Any home business? Any new business?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm under business, the, the sign in town that, it's a Chamber of Commerce sign. We went to put information up on the Daddy Water Dance. And I found out that there, you have to be like a, you pay like a one-time fee, I guess it was two hundred and fifty dollars, and then there's a sixty dollar a year.
There's our chamber member, you have to ask.
Sixty dollar, oh, I'm telling you what I was.
Yeah, oh, okay.
There is a, there's a sixty dollar a year, uh, maintenance fee. Now, I mean, the youth commission, we can do it, I just thought it may be possibly advantageous for the village to do it. The village does it, we could be covering all our commissions. And then the village, we could also use it for things throughout the year, also with reminder for dog tags, um, probably put up a sign when we do hydrant flushing, stuff like that. I, I know, I spoke with Bob about it, I mean, we do have money there, I just kinda wanted to see what everyone's thoughts were, like I said, if we cover all our commissions, there's stuff that we could, I'm sure the, um, I mean, I put a poll, the neighbors was doing some fundraising, but with the cancer memorial, I'm sure there's stuff that we could put on there for the village. If we do something for this Wounded Warrior, we'd be able to put information up there about that. Like I said, the first things that popped into my, my head. Like I said, the first thing that popped into my mind was a reminder on dog tags, like, we for two or four dog tags are due, hydrant flushing, stuff like that, brush and leaf pickup, when it's gonna begin, when it's gonna end, um, along with the commissions, being able to use it, too, if they do for them. If, I mean, if we don't wanna do it as a village, if it's a youth commission, we'd rather just do it on our own, I thought it'd be advantageous if we did it as a village.
If the village does it, does that give each commission the right to do it, how you don't know? Does each commission have the right to manage?
And, 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 I'm gonna have, how many organizations got in, twelve? Have they put stuff on there? I thought they had twelve on there, at one time, I don't know.
There was one blank spot, doesn't, aren't all the people that...
See, what John's saying is, the village should buy it, and give us more bank for a buck, because we have all these commissions.
But then the other outfits can advertise their stuff. If you're gonna have stuff up there all the time, how, how are the other churches and whatnot, that part membership?
I mean, they, they change it regularly, I mean, he was just out there changing it again today, from the stuff that went on over the weekend.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen.
And that's fine, I mean, the youth commission will do it on its own. I just thought I'd bring it up, and see what everyone's thoughts were, I think there's some stuff that the village could do on there that'd be advantageous for all the residents.
I think there would, I just would wanna dominate the sign. For, for, it's worth it to lie, use it, I don't use it, I mean...
I don't think, no, I don't think so. No, but I mean, so, you, you use it, it's, it's not like the youth commission would use it at all, either.
It, it makes sense, what you wanna do, but I, I have to admit, that having time for the Lions Club, or someone else has gone to put stuff up there, and because the time treatment hasn't been up there enough to be effective, so, yes, I agree with what you're saying, but at the same time, is it gonna be effective by doing it? And that, 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 I have to admit, the mayor's right on that.
I mean, John might get more money for a buck if you use the youth commission, because the two-fifty, you can select your time on the sign, and if all the commissions count. Would, would...
That probably would work better.
Oh, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I, I really think, because the village would dominate the sign more, like, if you wanna put all the stuff up, leaf pickup, or water, or, uh, flushing, hydrants, or commission meeting, I mean, you're...
Well, I, I don't think, you, 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 I've been saying, the big thing's hydrant flushing twice a year.
I'm just saying, you know, and, you know...
You know, dog tags once a year.
Well, where does it, where does it stop?
No, it's fine.
I think youth commission, they want it, they do it.
No problem.
Any other business? One quick thing, Rita, while you're here, yet, have you approached any of the organizations, like the Amets, or the Lions Club on your program at all?
I've started that, and I'm hoping to, are, are they strong in this area?
I just, yeah, I guess...
No, that's a, that's an excellent idea.
Okay, other business, motion for a return? Second. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes.